Yes.
I can well that we
We are recording right now. Yes.
Yep.
You have an upstairs now, just I can see it.
Alex got a whole.
I sent you this, so you're on set, right?
Put it out.
We can get on. I guess it's coming.
We have not heard otherwise, but.
I'm sorry. Yeah, okay.
Hey, welcome to this new meeting of September nineteenth. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Madam Chairwoman, point of order. You, as the Chairwoman, had no authority to cancel the executive session that was scheduled by unanimous vote of the school board. It should be in executive session now.
I have the authority to schedule, I have the, yes, other than expulsion hearings, I have the authority to schedule or or dismiss executive sessions for the board.
So you're dismissing my motion? Correct, you're denying my motion?
Well, say the motion again.
I, we should be in executive session, we should be following through with the motion, the, the the vote that the school board had, we should be in executive session.
No, we should not.
Okay, Madam Chairwoman, I appeal the ruling of the Chair that my motion is out of order. It doesn't need a second.
I'll look at that.
Just as, just following procedural rules, this is an appeal of the Chair's decision. I'm just, I'm just educating, this gives each person one opportunity to speak. Our Chairwoman has the opportunity to speak twice to this because she is defending her ruling. So with that, Madam Chairwoman, do you mind if I go first, just because of my appeal? Thank you so much. So what I'm, what I'm referring to specifically is that we have policy BBAA, the Board Member Authority and Duties, and I'm quoting directly from the policy. Members of the Board of Directors have authority only when acting as a body legally in session. The Board shall not be bound in any way by any statement or action on the part of an individual board member, including the chairperson. So according to our policies, you do not have authority to cancel that executive session. I'll rest.
I'll go next. This was put to what I felt was the appropriate level to deal with these concerns, which would be administrative level, and it has gone to that, to that part, that's where it's gone. And I'm consulting our lawyer more than once, he strongly recommended we not do this because of the legal ramifications if we did.
Any else want to speak?
The relevant policy also gives you the authority, does it not? It's not BBAA, it's a relevant policy, the purpose of this hearing that gives the Chair the power to do that. I'm also concerned, and this may be something we talk about a different time, about what we're spending in legal costs. Contact the lawyer over and over again.
Anybody else?
Just out of curiosity, we voted, everybody voted to pass that motion. And is there a statute or a policy that, where do we find that for future reference that gives one person the right to change that?
I've been trying to do this without putting names in anywhere. But on the advice of the lawyer, because of the questions that were raised that they wanted, wanted answers for in the executive session, we would have had to brought in an employee because some of the evidence referred to an employee and they have the right to be in any meeting that their behavior or whatever during school is being questioned. And it looked to the lawyer and to us like it was a thin line, it might be a human rights violation.
I thought it was, I'm sorry, can I confirm with the question still? I thought it was as a result of the allegations of not following procedure, that the grievance was, of the executive session was.
That was one of them.
That was.
And in order to present, to present the evidence, if you want to call it that, it involved an employee. That's.
So it's policy KE?
I know, I, I, I recognize the policy of the employee, but I didn't think that was part of this particular executive session, I thought we were going in to discuss what did, if you go towards, you want the, the allegations, the serious allegations made by a colleague to find out what those serious allegations were, I didn't think it had anything to do with any particular employee, because of course we'd have to have the employee there, I know that. But I also know, I just wonder, I mean, how do we, how do we vote unanimously and then have that vote taken away? That's the only thing that I'm really concerned about right now, is my vote was negated without.
Okay, before Friday, I think, the day after, we had the motion. We consulted our lawyer as to how this should work and what should we do, we should do, and then this was all came to be. All that.
Do we have, Miss, do we have some, I'm not even sure, it's supposed to be still talking, but I'm gonna talk until you tell me to stop. Do we have some, maybe some misunderstanding here between the various parties that are, I mean, should we start over and try to sort this out going backward and then coming forward again?
I'm gonna say, as I said to people on the phone, we have sent this to what I think is the appropriate level to deal with this. And.
You say it again, because you know I couldn't hear a thing you said.
We have sent this to the appropriate disciplinary level within the district, which is, in my opinion, the administration. I have informed Mr. Tabor of his other options that he has if he wants to pursue this. So.
I don't think any of us have all the information, and we shouldn't. I think that's part of the issue here, this isn't our business to know the detail of what the complaint is. It is, it, that's the process that goes to the Chair, that goes to the administration, and in this case, significant legal consultation. I mean, there are some things we just shouldn't be privy to.
Like what?
Like, like this, if you're gonna call in an employee, they have to have the opportunity to defend themselves. So whatever that situation is, the employee has to have the opportunity to defend themselves.
But I didn't think this was about an employee, I thought it was about policy.
The evidence.
What evidence?
Send it involved to show that there was some misuse of, of policy was about an employee.
You can't discuss it without their presence.
Sorry, not following the procedure, right? It's, it's not about the policy. The, the motion that was made, Mr. Tabor, you made a serious allegation. The allegation was that our administrative team is not following board policy. That was the allegation. And according to, again, policy BECE, this is executive session law, again, I am, I am reading highlighted. It says discussion or consideration, these are things that, which may be discussed in executive session. Discussion or consideration of employment, appointment, assignment, duties, compensation, evaluation, resignation, disciplining, promotion, demotion, or dismissal of public officials, appointees or employees, or, and I'm emphasizing, the investigation of charges or complaints against persons subject to the following conditions. Number one, only when public discussion could be reasonably expected to cause damage to the reputation or violate the individual's right to privacy. Number two, the person charged or investigated has a right to be present. That seems to be the confusion part. There's an assumption being made by my fellow board members that is about some employee that's not going to be in executive session. I can tell you that that is patently false.
I'm having a.
And I just want to make sure that we understand that that's patently false. I'm frustrated because I've said this so many times and it just keeps getting ignored. How can it be ignored?
You've changed your story.
I just.
Original premise was you had a concern before we brought an employee forward for official confirmation. That was your original concern, and it has changed, Josh, since then. It has changed.
That motion, that motion was denied by the board.
It was.
That's right.
And then you complained that we ignored your, your, your motion, that we ignored you.
We weren't following norms. And then the board said, I don't understand what it's all about, and so then I said it out loud. And that's when you said, that's a serious allegation, Mr. Tabor.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it should be investigated. Should it not?
I think we need, well.
Through the proper channels.
Through the proper channels, and I believe that that happened this week and last.
We're reading the executive session. We're setting an incredibly dangerous precedent, right? That a board chairperson in cahoots with another board member can change the decision of the.
Now you're making another accusation. Nobody was in cahoots, this was a decision that was made on the advice of legal.
Did you meet?
By our chairman.
Did you meet outside the board?
No, I did not.
You did not meet with any member of this board outside of.
With the administration.
Then I, then I recant what I just said, I apologize. I misunderstood, I was told differently. I was told by the person that called me that had, they had met with you. So that's my, that's my misunderstanding based on what I was told, okay? So I apologize to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have a comment who hasn't spoken yet? What do we do now?
We either vote, if there's no other, no one else to say anything, then we vote either, right? A, a yes upholds your decision, not, or your decision to deny my motion, right? So in other words, a yes vote means we don't go into executive session. A no vote means go into executive session.
Can't do it now anyway. Okay, so we're, this is the vote, let me see if I have this right. If you vote yes, that's to uphold not having the executive session, if you vote no, that means you think we should have had the executive session.
I think we need a motion.
The, the appeal hasn't made, that is the motion.
So Sue, can you read the motion so everybody is clear?
I'm actually needing, you have it in writing, can you, can you read? Because I have as much as I can, it's basically, I appeal the ruling of the Chair, that the motion, so can you?
Madam Chairwoman, I appeal the ruling of the Chair that my motion is out of order.
Okay. And so to me, as you say that, a yes vote, does that uphold the, the original?
Of the Chair.
Okay.
Can you read it one more time, I'm sorry, I'm so visual.
We should, we should be clear, yes.
I appeal the ruling of the Chair, or Mr. Tabor appeals the ruling of the Chair, that his motion is out of order.
I still don't.
Yeah, to me, that a yes vote, that means that you are the appeal. So that's where I'm, that's where I'm struggling, Josh, with the language.
Because it's the way I'm appealing the Chair's decision. So
Decision.
To deny my, 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 my contention that we should be in executive session, right? I contended that we should be in executive session. She said that's out of order, right? Her decision stands. And so I appeal her decision to my fellow board members, right? On the grounds that I've stated and what I said, I'm peeling that decision. So if you vote yes, you're voting to uphold the Chair's decision.
And I'm gonna just be clear with.
The whole lengthy thing that you read with all the details of why we can go into executive session, I have the abbreviated version, but where is that? Because I need to reread that.
This is, yeah, I can pass it down. It's front and back, executive session law.
Attorney reference for this particular type of session, which I did find out.
It's K, K.
So is that BECE?
BECE, I believe that is, correct?
K E is.
No, 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 the policy that just handed down.
E E C.
But the one that you really need to look at is KE.
I guess that's my question, is I feel as though we are really just asking you to self-police yourself as far as what specifically this content is, because it's either a board decision or it truly fits into this. Seeing that you brought it to administration, administration did speak to the individual, to me, that feels like it's more of the board policy and not the executive session policy, the one, the KE, whichever. So I guess that would, those are my thoughts, like, I think this is like a real legit, like, you need to really look at these and decide, like, is this, does it, or do you feel strongly enough that this truly fits into the executive session guidelines? And this heinous whatever truly like hires this, or that like, no, this is administration and we don't need to place this because that's not our job.
Born I do, and I'll even say this, if we go into executive session and you feel what I have to say is out of line, then you close the executive session.
Now, how do we do that? So we can't do that, the challenge is, how do we do it this evening with the individual?
When we're in executive session, we can adjourn at any time, someone can motion for.
But how can we do it with the individual not?
You can't.
Present.
As I've, as I've said, it's not about that individual, this is what I'm saying publicly, right? Is I'm, I'm assuring you, and if, if there's in any way you feel an executive session, I am saying that, then, then you should definitely call me out. But I'm, I'm stating, I'm sitting here publicly saying, that's not what I'm talking about.
And the lawyer knows the full reasoning of everything, and that was the advice of the lawyer.
If the employee's gonna be mentioned, ma- maybe it's not that disciplined for the employee, but if the employee's gonna be mentioned, they need to be giving advance notice and in time to get legal counsel if they desire and to be present.
But it was their advice, knowing the content of the situation to not have the executive session.
Wish I would have been there, I did ask to be there for calling the lawyer, and I was denied that opportunity.
You have an opportunity.
Have an opportunity.
Not here to this meeting, right? I mean, I, I did ask, I did state that to our chairperson.
I do think to Mr. Tabor that you were invited to come in a couple of times and you chose not to. So I think that's something that needs to be, like, considered.
Again, and I feel that, because that's inappropriate, I feel that this is the time that we meet.
Okay.
This is the public session where we have these deliberations, I don't believe that board members should be meeting outside of a public session because that's not why we were elected to do the work of the board in public session. Except for the very, very, very few times we should be in executive session, and they're defined here.
I think to come in and ask administration questions and get clarification on things is completely appropriate as a board member.
Absolutely.
Sounds like that was that situation.
Administration. Yeah, I met with.
Why would this not follow, why would you have not taken that opportunity?
I did, I did meet with administration, one on one.
But not the lawyer, or not when you guys talked, I'm trying to piece the puzzle together here.
Yeah.
There's missing pieces.
Yeah.
This whole conversation is about people not following policy, how does that not involve at least one individual?
It does.
Then, then the point is made.
The first, the person is sitting on the board.
Person.
The person's sitting on the board. How, how, how could that not be interpreted?
I've heard the person is not here.
Yes, the person's not.
Say it again, Josh.
Part of the evidence.
So, so just to be clear, he's talking about administration, not about, not about, you know, the other situation, because it's moved to a different level in your opinion. However, it still is necessary to allow us the opportunity for, if it is an executive session, to have attorneys present to support us as well. So, like, there's, that's just the reality of that.
I, I did make our administrator aware, I met one on one.
Right, yep.
I did go through that process.
But that was, you know, from my, and I was not present for that because you asked me not to be there.
That is true, because, because I, I don't, I'm feeling, I don't want to go into.
What I want to say is that, at that moment, that was not a conversation about moving into, I guess, I guess it didn't rise to that level.
Will it help to reference policy CA?
Can, can I interject here?
Sure.
I'm, I'm looking at KE. KE doesn't, doesn't fall, that parents, students, or other citizens with complaints or concerns regarding an aspect of side sixty, and employees thereof shall be encouraged to seek a resolution at the lowest level. That doesn't have anything to do with the board. The next sentence is, the only exception are complaints that concern board, school board actions or operations, such complaints should be addressed to the board chair. So then this is a board issue of, of policy, not following policy. So it's, it's, it's a violation of policy. This isn't a parent, student, or citizen's complaint, this is a board member's complaint.
Right.
For not following policy, and again, we're not following policy.
So the motion is on the, yeah, that you need to respond to.
Somebody want to read it one more time?
Sorry. Yeah, I'm.
So, so was the, was the topic of the executive session being changed, is that what I'm understanding from this, from the original concern of what was previously proposed to this?
The motion that was made is I made the accusation that I feel admin is not following policy. The motion that was made was to investigate that investigation, to investigate that statement. That was the motion. We can watch the video.
No, 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 I'm, I'm just, Ms., Ms., yeah, so Kate did say, you know, I'd like to have an executive session to discuss this, which is, it was regarding that. I think that one of the, the difficult pieces of this is that it is wrapped up in the original concern that you have, and so that.
Your original, your original request for an executive session was around an individual, and you said it clearly in that.
And then when we got to the next iteration, basically, I, I am, I also was under the impression, until I went back and reread it like three times and re, that it was still in regards to that, with the policy piece, with the policy piece. Is, is that accurate? Okay, so.
I need any more clarification?
So the lawyer, knowing the most updated information, advises, advised that it should not be held. Yes.
And that follow policies KE.
But he's referring to KE, KE doesn't have anything to do with the board, it's, it's with citizens.
Right, and I think that the interpretation from the attorney, which of course, you know, interpretations, was that this was a citizen, really a citizen complaint versus a board complaint.
I think, and honestly, I think if I had been in the room speaking to the legal team and, and said the things that you say, I, I don't believe our legal counsel would have made the advice that they did. I do believe it'd be different.
So we want to pay for Josh to have the opportunity to talk to our attorneys?
Well, I think it's important, honestly. I do think it's important that you have the opportunity
So.
Get on the same page.
Okay. So this is, this is, so I, I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding it correctly. When a board member feels that they should go into executive session, we're gonna want them to speak to our legal counsel before making such a decision?
I think that this was a challenging situation because there was a great deal of confusion among the board members as to why this was not just brought to administration ahead of time, and it was really, I felt it was really unclear, or I felt very unclear of the purpose of the executive session, and that it was to pursue that you didn't feel things were followed instead of about the specific individual. So I think that there was a lot of fuzziness and, like, a lot of gray with that, and it was also quite shocking, and I'll be honest, and it's in the minutes, like, I was still reeling off that original meeting and how we, like, treated someone, because it was really stinky. So I think that there is like a lot of emotion, a lot of confusion, because it seems to have, like, bounced very quickly. So I don't think that this was anyone actively shutting someone down. I think that this was a really situation that trans, but it changed very quickly, and I don't think we all knew all the pieces, which without, you know, there's.
I, I also think that KE does apply, it goes to the Chair, the Chair addresses it in, in situations like this, and if the attorneys say you're, you're walking in difficult territory where you could face a lawsuit, we should listen to that.
Even though our legal team did not have.
I don't, I don't know what you're saying, I, I.
I'm just, I'm just pointing that out, I'm making sure that that's part of it, right?
You're gonna tell the attorney something the attorney doesn't understand is, is challenging to me, but you do certainly have the right to do that, I'm pretty sure that it was, the situation was represented clearly and fairly. But if you think you have more legal information than the attorney and you want to share that, then you certainly have the right to do that.
I can certainly appreciate the board's hesitation based on the first meeting. Because when, when, when you're thinking in the moment of how to deal with things, I, I'm the first to say, I, I don't always speak with the polish of a politician. I don't, right? When I had time to think about what I was doing and spend a lot of time reading policy, I was able actually to, to clarify exactly what the issue is. And I think the, the, me saying, hey, I don't think we're following our norms, and this is the issue, was able to clarify exactly what I feel the issue is. So as much as there is hesitation about what was previously said, I'm sitting here telling you, like, spent a lot of time thinking about this, I've read a lot. I'm asking my fellow board members to, to trust that, you know, I'm, I'm not going to violate any employee in this district. I mean, I feel like I have, like, poof, come up to that line so, so far publicly, but I don't, I really don't know what else to say. I, I understand that my first thing was, was clouds this, I understand that, that makes complete sense to me. But I also think if we give a little grace in saying, you know, someone trying to figure out what the issue is in the moment versus having some time to really think about it, hone in on it, and then bring it up to the issue of the board, and then for that statement said, to then want to have a fellow board member say that should be investigated, I'd love for us to go through that process. And I urge you guys to allow us to go through that process.
Just confirming information, per the information the lawyer had, the lawyer said you not have the meeting, that is why it was canceled. You do have an opportunity to speak with the lawyer, and are you taking advantage of that?
Don't feel as comfortable to do that, I think we should have an informational meeting with the lawyer on television and we go through it, that's a public session. We, we have, we are supposed to meet in front of the public unless.
Okay, but so you still have an opportunity to meet with them, however you choose, whether it's public or private, to.
I don't think we can do that in public. We can't have a public meeting with the attorney present to discuss what you're talking about, that, that would, I can't imagine, my first decision is always gonna be what the attorneys tell us to do, Josh. I, and if you're saying that since the first meeting that was such a disaster, you've, you've now figured this all out, I, I struggle with that, I don't know that any of us are attorneys, and my job is partly to protect the well-being of the district financially, and I certainly don't want to make a decision that's gonna result in a lawsuit.
But does one person, one board member, meeting with administration and the lawyer, or just directly with the lawyer, does that go, like, that's not three or more, or more than three of us, or does that, does that, and the lawyer is saying that's okay?
Right, and according, I mean, I think when we had that meeting, where we were just talking to the attorney, he said that you guys, you know, you, you know, you, you all stand out for a, a better time after the meeting's over and to chat, those are not, those are not things that are inappropriate. And I think that informationally, it's okay to, to be, to, to learn and ask and get, you know, questions answered.
There has to be an executive session.
Well, if we were to do the whole board, yeah.
But, but just, but just one of us, if we want to speak with the lawyer, that's completely fine and not against anything.
Do it for things like getting.
Peace of mind of like, yes, we can pursue this, or like, no, we actually aren't in the.
I mean, just for a very neutral example of that is, is right before the budget meetings are finalized, usually the board chair goes and talks with the, with the attorneys, because there's, there's a lot of information that needs to be shared, so. Yeah, so those are, those are, those are real and, and honest and, yeah.
Without clouding the issue too much more than it's already been clouded. Cloudy.
Cloudy.
If we are going to do, I mean, I'm brand new, I've only been on this board two months. The table's looking good on the board. Don't you think perhaps the discussion should have been had when we had the motion? And more of this discussion should have been had so that it was finalized before we voted? I'm still stung by my vote being recalled. So I'm just saying, I mean, maybe we let the ball drop all the way around, and now we're dealing with some really disgraceful behavior, quite frankly, so maybe the, the discussion should be more, and we should be, find out what's going on during the discussion period of the motion before we vote.
You can only say so much?
Right, I thought we had, we had, because it was to person.
Well, I haven't had a chance to see the video because my wonderful friend here wasn't working. And I, the video of the meeting, so I could review it, and the minutes didn't give me all of the information I was looking for, so, again, I'm saying this is not fun for anybody, I'm sure. But I think we had a discussion and we agreed to go into executive session on a whatever the word. whatever the words were. And now we are not.
I think Nancy, this is the weirdest situation I've ever been in in my 14 years on this board. And I think part of it is the situation has morphed. Warren.
I think that over time, there's there's growth in knowledge and and things do morph. And I think that's part of the issue. I would say that you're right, but.
The specific one, though.
I would say that even in this, I would agree with you. I.
So I I don't think I was clear. I I wasn't clear that I still don't know what the issue is. I still don't know. But the board chair does. And that's where that policy comes in.
I'm not sure the board chair does. I think the superintendent knows, but I'm not sure the board chair knows because it doesn't sound like the board chair understands. I mean, I know you think K E, but I think there was something else involved with it. And I don't know all of the details, but I know some of them because I sit around and read policy for fun.
So I mean, you need. Do you mean you know the details of what happened?
What happened? I know. I know that there were some concerns about policy not being adhered to.
Right. I heard that, too.
That's and I know that there was some talk about perhaps we should meet to discuss these policies not being adhered to. And we had, that's a serious allegation. And then it was a discussion of which we all voted unanimously to go into executive session to address these policies that were not being adhered to. That's what I heard and understood. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I think 2020, with the uncleareness of the situation, we should have said, Josh, talk to the lawyer before we even make the motion to see if this is appropriate for an executive session. I feel that that should have been done. Unfortunately, none of us did that.
Yeah.
So now post that point. We did speak or whoever spoke to the lawyer.
Right.
And they're saying that. And I think that this is important. This is not just like, oh, Josh made the motion. I think this could be someone saying something about anything. And if there's not complete clarity as to the appropriateness of an executive session, that individual should speak with a lawyer and confirm it before we do this. And so I I think that that's like a decent precedent, and in my opinion, it might do sense, a decent precedent that the president of board should make because we don't want to go into it for that. If it's not spot on. And then this could be for anything. So knowing that you have the opportunity to confirm that, yep, you're absolutely appropriate doing this, then we can stand like, then we can all stand behind our votes, I guess, with complete clarity to the situation.
Can I add one thing to that? Any board member, I mean, this could go on and cost us a fortune if board members all thought, oh, I have an issue. So I'm going to talk to the lawyer and see if we can. I K E speaks to that. The issue goes to the board chair. Board chair goes to the administration. If an attorney needs to be consulted, that's what happens. And they tell us what we should do. That's been my experience forever on this board. I I think it would be dangerous to say anybody who thinks they've heard something that they don't like and wants an executive session can themselves go to the attorney would not necessarily be inappropriate.
I think I think knowing this one was so fuzzy.
Like, but I mean, so they can take that to the board chair.
Yeah.
Explain the situation and and that's where that goes. I mean, that's the
The process.
That's the process.
That's the process.
I think you just I I did, you know, Nancy, feel free to refute it. I did say, if we're going to call the lawyers on this, I would like to be present. Did I state that to you?
Yes. And we made an accommodation for you.
The lawyers were called and I was not present.
Well, I mean, that was way before. When I talked to you, we had already met. You didn't make that.
Oh, I see.
Made that after.
Didn't you didn't let me know that you had already spoken to lawyers?
You we have made a time and and made it available to you. So.
We I mean, we talk about financial discipline, right? I mean.
You said you wanted to. So lots of.
So so initially, I wasn't here. So I missed that discussion. Initially, when this came up and the motion was made, it was a unanimous vote. So everybody on this board agreed that it should be go to an executive session. And now that's been overridden. So.
On the attorney's advice.
On the attorney's advice, yes.
I think if we would have gone into an. Gone into an executive session. I I I think it would have resolved the issue without having to consult the attorney because it was more procedural. It was a procedural issue that was failed. And and now this is escalated into something different when it was a procedural issue that was that is at issue is a procedural issue. Policies are written, not followed. There was an issue. It it could have been discussed in an executive session if it got to a point where where it was personnel, then the executive session could have been terminated at that point. And at that point, you say we need to bring in the attorneys. But in but a simple executive session could have resolved this by everybody understanding the policy that was missed.
Jerry, what I'm hearing you're saying is different than what Josh is saying. Josh is 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 pointing the finger at somebody. So I mean, that that this is what's cloudy for me is that on one hand, we're talking about, oh, this is just a process that we should talk about. But it's not. It's talking about did a person do their job or not? And that's the fundamental issue for the lawyer. If if that's the conversation, it's job performance, what it is. And that person needs to be notified so they can have a legal be there with representation. I mean, this is I'm two or three issues rolled into one ball. And one that they're related and you I don't think you can take them apart without you know, making your case or whatever. And. More importantly, the attorney doesn't think we can do that. We have a motion.
Got to get to a place at some point.
Can you read it again, please?
Yeah. So this is Mr. Tabor appeals the ruling of the chair that his motion to go into executive session is out of order. So a yes vote would uphold the ruling of the chair. It's weird. It's just a motion that we've never done before. So it doesn't have the same flavor.
Everybody ready? Okay, all those voting yes?
We have a second. I thought we. There was a second. Yeah, there was a second. Yeah, I think it was. Yeah.
And all those voting yes will uphold the motion.
Okay. And opposed. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes. Oh, we didn't do that yet. We still have to.
Oh, yes.
Some minutes. The agenda. Um, I need somebody to make a a motion to amend our agenda. I'm not doing that.
Second, the agenda to vote that there was no executive.
Second. Yeah, thank you. All those in favor? Opposed. Okay, now we're going to start with the public.
Oh, yes. We didn't do that.
Now we have our public input by our vice chair.
The first public input session is a 21 minute session with each person having no longer than three minutes in which to make a statement. A second public input session may be held at the end of the meeting if allowed by the board chair. Speaker will be given will give his or her name, their town and reason for speaking. Public input is designated for district residents, but the board chair may grant non residents the opportunity to address the board. Statements concerning subject matter that falls under the law regarding executive sessions, for example, matters involving personnel cannot be made during public input. We as a community pledge to treat each other as we would wish to be treated. We pledge to seek understanding where there may be disagreement. Regardless of outcomes or opinions, we pledge to move forward with respect. This time is for comments or questions for the board. But please be aware that some questions cannot be answered at this meeting.
Do we have any public input?
Yeah, fellow Tabor North Borough. I've heard an awful lot about policy tonight and policy being followed. As a member of the public, I expect the board to follow all the policy. I look at policy like rules. The board should follow all the rules that are intact. If they don't like the rules, then you have the right to change them. Right? As board members, you should pass that down, the administration to the administration. We expect the administration to follow all the policy. It's up to the board to make sure the administration follows the policy. And we can go down the line even further. The administration expects the teacher, the teachers to follow that policy. And down further, the teachers expect the children to follow the policy. I believe that should be done. And number one in this district, that all of the policies or the rules be followed. I think as I look at Maine being the last in education in the United States that probably not following the rules and not being strict enough is why we are where we are now. And I leave it to the board to probably strengthen those. Thank you.
John, I think you should just stand right there. I don't want you coming up. Yeah, thank you.
I'm actually here to talk about policy. I'm going to come aside that way. But policy was highlighted by the media. And I wanted to highlight a policy that I think it shows a lot of contradiction. And like I really think it shows some immediacy in discussion of the school board and needs to see some change. But I only have three minutes, so I'm going to read quick. So this is policy G B E B. And it says examples of unacceptable conduct by staff members that are expressly prohibited include but are not willing to follow. For non guidance counseling staff, students by their personal or family problems and or relationships. If a student initiates such a discussion, staff members are expected to be supportive but to refer the student to appropriate guidance counseling staff. In either case, staff involvement should be limited to a direct connection to students' school performance. I've been a member of this district for over 30 years. And one of the pillars of our district has been relationships with students. And I think that this policy, while well intended, really calls into question our ability to have relationships with students. And it goes on to say that other unacceptable things are disclosing personal information. I think sexual obviously needs to be not disclosed. But then it goes on to say family. And as somebody that lives in the district, has children in the district who participate and go to school in the district and is a teacher in the district, it's really hard to not be fired if five school board members want to say that I'm violating this policy just because I'm a district president. And I really, really think if you want to read that on the things that you should look at as far as appropriate and kind of it's up to you and your call, it goes into invasion of my privacy in my home when I invite my, say, girl my daughter's boyfriend into my home. I I have certain rights, too. And this policy says that I really need to think about inviting any student in our district into my home. And I really think there needs to be hard to look at that. I am fully in favor of the sexual misconduct aspect of this policy. But the relationship policy, whether it was coalition with essential schools, whether it was relevance bringing relevance in relationships, or whether it's now bar, you know, three of the eight integral parts of bar is building relationships. And if I can, as a teacher, have conversations with students about their lives and I can't share with them aspects of my life, like I broke my ankle at school. You know, like, it makes it really hard to do my job. And that's something that this board has the responsibility to correct. Since probably if five board members wanted to get together, they could fire almost anybody in this district under this current laws.
Great. Thank you.
And if I could just follow up, we do have a clause to be worth is N E P N slash N S B A codes, B C A, board member code of ethics, subsection N. I will welcome and encourage cooperation and participation by teachers, administrators, and other personnel in developing policies that affect their welfare and that of the children they serve.
You have other topics of quote?
My name is Chris Whitley. I'm North Borough, lived there for 47 years, paid school taxes for 47 years. Just got my tax bill. Thousand dollars increase in one year. Okay, and I feel these kids at school that are being graduated and they're coming into the workforce because I'm back in the workforce now that saving something years ago. They're not ready to go into the workforce. They can't read. They can't write. You give them more than two instructions and they don't know what to do with it. These kids are our future. They follow behind us. And that tax that went up is not for one year. It is forever. It'll be a thousand dollars a year, every year after that. So I caution people, next time we go to the voting booth, you should think long and hard before you fall that level because it's going to be forever. Think about it. Can I afford this or not? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, we're going to move on to the minutes of August 29.
Do we just do we just get these minutes?
You got them last night. And then Lauren's done some work on them. And I've done some work.
Whether we're going to table them or not, which is fine. I can make a motion to do that. But could we also include the gentleman who was there who talked about the leach field with us?
Yes. Oh, yeah. Oh, Miss. Yeah, Neil. Yes, I sure can. Yeah. It was it was Neil. Yeah.
So we're tabling those.
There's some the minutes. I'll make a motion. We table the minutes till our next meeting.
Are we doing both just for?
Yes, please.
This night, so I'm assuming that's going to be.
That was motion. Just need to second.
I'll second.
Did somebody second it?
Okay. All those in favor of tabling? All right, September.
It was both.
All right. Moving to number four.
Okay, so we have Lisa and Jamie here from Harriman and Associates. Thank you for coming. That just kind of give us an overview of the facility study and answer any initial questions anybody has. I know you have a presentation, so I think we're going to try to move to the seats down here so we'll be able to see that.
So I had the first two rows go just so you can see clearly. Thank you.
Bye. Of course, sure.
No, because you put me and then I put Sue and then. I don't want that.
All right, I'm careful.
Everybody needs to stand still.
No breathing.
Guaranteed.
Perfect.
One more.
Do you want? Do we want part of the lights on or all off?
I think we just need them off on the presenting. Any either way, doesn't matter. But can you guys see it? Okay. Or should I turn the other one off? It looks like a movie theater from Hare Spring, honey.
Thank you.
All right. Well, good evening and thank you so much for having us to your board meeting tonight. We're going to give an overview of the facility study that we've brought in to collaborate with all of you on. My name is Lisa Sawen. I am an architect and principal at Harriman. I lead our pre K 212 design studio. And with me is Jamie Wollett. He is a project manager and architect in our studio as well. And so you will see both of us throughout this process as well as our architects and engineers. We are an architecture and engineering firm. We were founded in Maine a hundred and fifty-four years ago. And we had the distinct pleasure of working on this school as well. And a facility study about twenty-three years ago. So we're going to go over what the facility study is and then we'll open it up for any questions that folks have. You can see tonight's agenda, we're going to define the projects, so the project intent, the priorities, schools that we're looking at, history, our process, and then a timeline, key milestones, and next steps. Alright, so defining the project. So what are the goals of the project? We have met with district leadership as well as the RFQ that was provided that we responded to. And essentially, the district will use the facility study to update the capital improvement plan. And essentially, that is a plan that is maintained to understand what are the elements that you need to invest in to keep the school running from a facility standpoint and really trying to be proactive with as many of those so we don't get in a reactionary standpoint with the facilities. It also is going to inform possible renovations and construction projects and the current and future uses and configurations of school facilities. So really looking at best use of the facilities. To achieve this, the following key components will be utilized in consideration of possible uses and/or projects. Facilities assessment for each of the eight current school buildings. So we will have our architecture and engineering teams kind of onsite. They will walk all the buildings. They will be looking at all the systems of the building from architectural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, site, safety and security technology. And we will put together a facilities assessment as to our findings and our recommendations for each of those schools. Ten-year enrollment projections by school. So we're working with a consultant to perform a ten-year enrollment projection so we can understand where enrollment is headed in the future. We are looking at grade alignment and building utilization. We're also looking at preschool program accommodation. Something that has come from the state recently is CDS and the school's responsibility to take on that program. That will be coming in twenty twenty-seven. And then community feedback and engagement. So it's really important that we work with the community throughout this process, get feedback from the community, and keep everyone up to speed throughout. So what are the priorities of the project? Provide preschool offering. Clear understanding of enrollment projections. Define space and program needs. So we're going to meet with every principal and staff within the schools to understand how they're utilizing space right now. Is it appropriate space? A lot of times we'll find that if we're running out of space in a certain school, and this is just hypothetical, not necessarily any of your school per se, we will find that services are being provided in a space that wasn't intended for that service. A lot of times we'll find clauses that have services being provided. So we want to understand how the buildings are being used, are they being used, are the spaces adequate for the programming? And is it overutilized, underutilized, and really get an understanding about that building and programming. We also want to define the short term and long term, so five to ten-year capital improvement plan. Again, preventative, preventive and proactive plan for addressing and putting together budgets for these facilities so that we don't get to a certain point in your facilities and there's more work than you can possibly do and you find out that your systems are failing in your emergency situation. So putting together a plan to avoid that. Understand how to remedy the aging schools with the biggest needs. A priority is fiscal responsibility and community participation. So these are the schools. You all are very familiar with them, but these are the eight schools that are included in the study. And this is the proximity of those schools within your district. So what's the history? We're going to build upon your facilities analysis and concept design history. We, Harriman did a study about twenty-two years ago on your facilities and did a master plan. That master plan looked at unused and excess capacity at that time at former elementary schools and decreasing enrollment at that time and the capacity of Hussy Primary Building and identified maintenance inefficiencies at various schools. Three years ago, another consultant, CHA, worked with the district to put together a referendum that addressed additions and renovations to three of your schools and also looked at closing one of your schools and consolidating with another. And then you have ongoing phase mechanical upgrades that are happening right now. So our process, kickoff meeting, we had a kickoff meeting with key stakeholders to define and reaffirm that we had the priorities understood and the goals understood and also what the processes that will be unfolding. Facilities assessment of both buildings and site. Space needs assessment, so reviewing educational programs, spaces, space needs, and enrollment capacities. Other thing we're looking at too is any future programming that we can think about that might be coming so we can plan for that. And then the facilities master, oh sorry, enrollment projections, facilities master plan, developing options, creating a financial profile for each school and drafting the facility study and then the capital projects plan, which is that five to ten-year plan we spoke about earlier, and community engagement. So that's kind of our seven-step process. And I'm going to turn it over to Jamie to go over what the facilities assessment is.
Okay, folks. So the questions are, how are the building systems operating? So we're going to bring, actually, we're starting next week, we're coming through all the schools over the next few weeks with our architectural and engineering teams. We're going to be walking through, looking at all the system, Lisa suggested that earlier, and we're going to be looking at how they're operating. We're going to be also looking at some financial data for the past few years and try and understand what the uses of the building is, electricity, fuel, maybe water and sewer, and kind of baseline that based on other schools of good efficiency and see where the schools fall and try to understand how each of these buildings are falling within that alignment. We're reviewing existing floor plans that we've started to receive. We're going to be looking at any projects of replacements of systems out ten years. Things that need to be done over the next five to ten years that maybe a roof is starting to age out, it's reached its capacity of expected life. And maybe it's leaking a lot, so we start to plan those, look at those and plan those into the capital improvement plan moving forward. And then we're going to, all those items that come out of that assessment, we're going to create a order of magnitude cost. So an estimate of what that cost would be in today's dollars and then try to forecast that out. So if a roof needs to be replaced in ten years, what might that cost? That allows the school district to plan ahead or try to plan ahead for those projects so that once you receive, reach that point, you're able to know what that cost is and plan it into the budget. And then we'll document and present those findings. You know, come to these, the meetings, come to these community events and talk about, you know, what those, what those future plans might be. So second question is, how can the building systems operate better? So the crux of all those investigations will be, how can we make these matters, these buildings improve over time? So this is an example of that capital project plan. If you all folks could read the second line down there. This is basically an Excel spreadsheet. It lists the items that we find. It kind of gives a priority to those, what type of classification, is it a security issue? Is it a heating issue? Things like that. And then defines what those are, defines the school that it's associated with, and then gives you a color-coded priority. So is it, the red is a critical item, a thing that really needs to be replaced or modified immediately. And gives you that color coding. And then as you get near the end of the chart, it starts to talk about that cost that would be forecasted out so you can plan for those, those years out.
And the intent is this is the dynamic. It's not something that just sits on a shelf. It's an Excel document, so facilities and the business administration can work in this spreadsheet, identify things that you've already done. You may find that you're prioritizing different things, it can be easily sorted, or maybe there are SRF funds that you want to apply to certain things. We can start to identify which of those might fall within that as well.
Yeah, so we'll share that with the facilities. They'll have that Excel document. They can add their own items as time goes along or delete items as they get completed.
Alright, so facility space needs assessment. So how are the schools utilized? I talked about this already. We'll interview the principals and then we'll document existing space allocation. And so essentially what we do is we create another Excel spreadsheet. We'll refer to it as Space Allocation Workbook. But it's a fancy term for an Excel spreadsheet that has all of the rooms listed, what the program is, what the size of that, that space is, how that compares to the main Department of Education spaces that they allocate. And we can understand where there's deficiencies in space, but we'll also ask how many students are in these spaces, how often is this used? So we start to really look at that utilization. We'll review and document existing educational programs and goals as well as look at the future. We'll align that where we start to see, okay, this is how the school has this many students right now, but in ten years it's projected to have this. Well, the recommendation may be, wait, let's see if this comes forward. Because if it's ten years out, let's say you may want to do this in ten years if this holds true. So we'll look at that to see at what time those enrollment projections are telling us different things. And then we'll review and compare, as I said, sizes, but also technology access on each building, security issues and needs, and access to special education programming. That's the biggest change we've seen in schools is really the amount of special education programming that schools need to provide and the space that's required for that. So even if a school, let's say ten, twenty years ago was able to serve X number of students, let's say I'll just pick a number, two hundred, and there's a hundred and fifty now, but they're over capacity because all these different programs need to serve these students. So we'll be looking at that as well. So another question is, how can it be utilized now but also in the future? So then what is the community and school solution or solutions? So we'll work with the facilities group to understand what we, the information we'll provide, the data. And really, we, we don't make decisions, we provide data and information so that collectively people can arrive at a solution. And it will start to show what those different solutions may be, what the pros and cons of those solutions are, and also what the rough order of magnitude cost is. So we'll put together that draft plan with goals, tasks, and dates for the master plan. And this is just an example of other districts we've worked with. This spreadsheet says options A, B, C, D, I think we made it all the way up to J. So there's very, so many different ways we can look at this and it's really arriving at what is the best solution for your district. So we'll look at all of the pros and cons around that and then we'll start to do site diagrams and building diagrams to be able to articulate what that is and why the group arrived at this is the best solution for the district. Community engagement, like we said, is really important. We will plan to have community forums as we go through this to first let the public know where we're at in the process as well as what's coming up. We'll also look at different ways to reach out to the community, inform folks of the process along the way. These are just different tools that could possibly be used. And then the project timeline and key milestone. So I'm realizing you can't see the peach line at the bottom, but that's since community engagement happens the whole time. Essentially, we had our kickoff, we start our site assessments in next week and every week thereafter. And then mid to late October, we'll be meeting with the principals to go over programming. Early to mid-November, we'll do staff programming surveys and meetings. So we'll send out surveys to the staff to get feedback and then we'll meet with staff. So they can show us, hey, this is working really well here, this isn't working really well here. And it's all about making sure that we include all the stakeholders in this. We'll look to mid-November again to do educational visioning. And what this is, is really saying, okay, this is where we are right now. This is where we see us going in the future so that we can put together a plan that accommodates that. And then we talked about the forums. Forum one, facility and education assessment. And then forum two is where we go over the options and recommendations. And then we'll be meeting regularly with the stakeholder group and determine dates for meetings with the facility committee. And then at the major milestone, so the facility assessment with the cost index, we're aiming for the end of November. This becomes super helpful in any budgeting that may come up. The comprehensive report deliverable, we're aiming for February. And then the capital project plan spreadsheet, that will be in February as well. So really looking tentatively, and this is just a game plan, we may adapt this as we go if we find we need to change this along the way and the committee says, hey, we'd like to try to hit this or that. And so we will look to those different dates to achieve that. And then next steps. We're sharing existing site and building plans and studies. We are reviewing the ones we have and we'll continue to review them as they come in. We're going to visit the schools, we'll meet with principals, we'll collect that operations and maintenance data. This really allows us to see when we make recommendations, where any savings is or where inefficiencies or efficiencies are. And then we are getting someone on board to be enrolled in. And with that, it's really dark. Essentially, open it up for questions or turn it back to the chair, however you'd like to proceed. We click it to that bottom.
Bottom of that, there we go.
Yeah, question, yeah. Parking, is parking part of this? Yeah, site, the site will be analyzed, athletic fields, parking, bus circulation, parent drop-off, all of that will be looked at. Yeah. Yes.
Really appreciate the timeline. Just, that's, that's very favorable and I appreciate the work on that. The, I guess more of a comment than a question, is, schools are ever-expanding? You know, and it really has an impact on our community. And I understand it needs to be fulfilled, but as part of your, your work and your studies of talking to the teacher teams and principals and all that, is how do we get more efficient? And sometimes efficiency is not expanding. But how do you do that? How do you, how do you look at that?
So a couple of different ways. So we will look, we, we don't talk about how programs get more efficient, but we talk about utilization of space. And so what we'll do is we'll look at how the building is being used. A lot of times we'll ask for a schedule so we can start to see how that's being mapped out. We'll work with the principal saying, you know, how, how are you utilizing all these spaces? And also understand how many, how many kiddos are in that overall school. We have some general rule of thumb so that we can run calculations to see, are we close to kind of right on, high, low, and then if we dig in, if we find out we're high or low, why is that? And it might be because there's a program sometimes, and I'll just use a special education program, for example. They need a large space, but they only have, I'd say only, they can't have any more than X number of kiddos in that space because of the need. And so we really have to look at it space by space. And then what we start to look at too is sometimes we can come up with efficiencies. Hey, did we, did you think about maybe co-locating these spaces? Or did we think about maybe doing something here so there's less travel time for whatever is happening? We, we see it both ways. Sometimes we see schools expanding, sometimes we see consolidation. And so it's really looking at how do you best utilize the space that you have. And it comes down to not only space, but a lot of times you find in districts blessing too. And so sometimes by having a more central location with different things, you can decrease that as well.
At least I add to that, that providing flexibility, you know, in some of the designs and renovations, you might be able to provide flexibility within that, a certain room. Maybe it's not just a classroom, maybe you can modify it so that it supports some other programs. So creating that flexibility within the spaces you have is a really good way to, to help utilize it a little even further.
As part of this, am I allowed to ask?
You're here, sorry.
Okay, alright, nope, I just want to make sure it wasn't a problem. Is part of like the assessment of the facilities that also the infrastructure that's provided, like in terms of law enforcement, fire, ambulance, things like that, what services that certain schools have access to versus not have access to and others in terms of being able to accurately assess because there may be times where like, oh, we could put groups of people over there, but that's actually, you know, crossing town lines where, where differing services are provided. there may be times where like, oh, we could put groups of people over there, but that's actually, you know, crossing town lines where, where differing services are provided.
Gotcha. If we get into an area of the study where we're starting to propose, hey, it would be, you know, we recommend, the group recommends that we should consolidate and let's say build a new school, just hypothetically. There would have to be conversations around that because one of the key things to that is safety and security. One of the first questions we ask is how quickly can emergency personnel get to the school? Because then we as designers have to design in essentially buying time, right? And so that, that's a really critical piece to that aspect. So definitely the question will be raised.
So imagine if we chose as a district to build some place where there was not law enforcement, our insurance would go up. That'd be like a consequence of one of those issues?
I can't answer that specifically. I think we find that a lot of times that plays into where you place a school. Because you want to be able to have services there quickly. Other questions? All three questions.
Yeah.
Just thank you for being here. Absolutely, thank you for having us. We're really looking forward to digging in and working with all of you. Great, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Denise, thank you.
Yes, I'll wait for you.
I don't think my knees would let me do it right instead of, but, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that would be nice.
You've come down and just shut off.
Have a good night.
Very bright, very shiny. Elsie says we're gonna all have headaches at the end of it if we don't get rid of it.
Okay. Is that it? Yeah, I don't know. Oh, I see. Is that it? Is that the wrong, you want us to go on? Oh.
I don't see that one.
Thank you.
There it goes, thank you. That's better. Okay, here we go. Okay, Lebanon Leach Field discussion.
There's Denise. So I think we started this conversation at our last meeting. Questions about financing and how to look at the Leach field as far as how much money it's going to cost and what options we have to finance it so that we can move ahead. So Denise has collected some information and we're sharing that right now.
Okay. Ask her everything around. Um, so I reached out to Forum Savings Leasing, who generally has our lease purchase agreements. They unfortunately do not finance anything that's not a fixed asset. So our real financing opportunity is with the main bond bank. It would be an easy application because we have that existing application out there for the Norton School, for the HVAC project at $356,350. So what they would do is if we wanted to finance with them, we would have to give them information about the project. How much money, how many years? I think it's 10 years you have to finance over. And then they could kind of roll it into the same financing. I did some estimates online, so we would be looking at the spring issue. So the bond bank does bond issues in the fall, and they do them in the spring. And we would have to get them information early in '25, by January sometime, I believe she said. And to finance this over 10 years with the main bond bank. I don't see my sheet of papers. I have 10 years for HVAC for Norton. Here it is. There we are. So the Leach field over 10 years would be approximately, again, depending on interest at that time, somewhere in the neighborhood of $15,000 plus minus a couple thousand per year for 10 years. What that does for us is in fiscal '25 that we're in, it means we don't have 125,000 of unexpected spending. We would have our first payment, actually, our first payment for this wouldn't be until November of '26. So we wouldn't see any unplanned spending for this project.
So when could we begin that project?
Yeah, that's my question.
So I think you can do the project. It's a reimbursement model, so you can do the project. It's, it's not like you have to, it's not like you have to have the money in hand to start the project. We would end up having to spend the money and get reimbursed when they send out the funds prior to year end.
So where would that money come from out of the budget initially then?
So it doesn't really hit an, it doesn't really hit an expense line. It hits almost a reimbursement line outside of the general fund. So we would spend the money, it's out in a separate facilities fund, for lack of a better word. And it sits there as an expense. The cash we would have spent, but by the end of the year, we would have been reimbursed by the bond bank for that. So the effect is zero for fiscal '25.
Which we're in.
We're in.
Okay.
And then in fiscal '26, I believe we have our first payments.
Okay. So we could, we can start the project, we know we're going to be approved? So you can buy?
Again, what I can do is ask more specific questions of them. If this is a path, like if you are saying it's going to be difficult to find $125,000 to save at this point, that is true. Then if we're going to finance it, this is our real, this is the way to go. So I can ask, I will get into more nitty-gritty with them. This, I think, was more a, I prepared for a general level of comfort with going this route versus, again, spending the money and saving savings in our budget.
Gotcha.
I just, I think that the budget as we have it is tight. And I don't, I, I think adding 125,000 that we have to find is, would be difficult.
So we would be borrowing 125 and paying back over 10 years 150?
Let's see. Once, yeah, it, the estimate came out to 151.3. But again, it could be more or less depending on where interest rates go over the next six months.
Yeah. So what do, we, when we get the loan, are, is it a fixed rate or is it, is it gonna change?
It's fixed. These, these would be fixed payments for 10 years.
Okay.
She's just saying that we won't have that finalization until.
Right.
Until they actually go.
And they are, like the interest rates are fluctuating right now.
And the bond bank has been good in the past. And when they can refinance a bond, they do in order to save us money. I think it was Noble High School, the last two or three years, we didn't pay any interest. Our payments lowered because interest rates went way down and they refinanced. So they are, they do look for those type of opportunities.
So we have a final cost of what that's gonna be?
So I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, I missed the two or.
I have 125 was my estimate. I don't know if we, if that's the final number or if that's still being worked on.
It's not, it's about 125,000.
So that's both Leach beds at LES?
That's just the one. That's the failed Leach field, yep.
Okay.
Wow.
Well, that's an awful lot of advisory rental concerns this time because that stream is right there. They, they think they didn't have to do.
Right, that you went 60 years ago.
Right, 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 right. And so each year, approximately, you're paying back 12,000, or excuse me, $25,000?
Wait a minute. 15, right?
I'm just trying to see average, you know, your interest, you know, that shifts. But the, the annual interest is approximately $4,000, approximately at the beginning. And then, you know, again, it changes over time.
So do we make, need to make a decision?
Yeah.
We need to move forward, yeah.
I can get some more details for you. I'll check out, obviously, and confirm that we're good to go.
So the colder weather is coming, how, how soon will they be able to start a project if we approved it?
I'm, I'm not sure. I'm not really involved on the projects.
So I have, Kevin has received all appropriate documentation and everything that we need to move ahead. He just needs to go ahead from the board to move ahead.
And does he think he has somebody who's?
But we have to wait.
Well, so the project, the main bond bank wouldn't say, oh, well, a Leach field, let me see. They just want to know that we're a public school district. We have a Leach field, which is a project that they would fund, and that we have appropriate things to go forward. We would, of course, have to come back at some point with a motion. I don't know exactly what that looks like this minute, but at the next meeting, I would have for you details, motions, things like that, if that's the way we want to go.
Yeah. And the question with, that we, that we left last week or two weeks ago now was, is this something we want to finance? Or is this something we want to do versus pumping it out? Like we had talked about continuing to pump it every weekly, basically. And so the, the question was like, that's a, there's that piece of it, and then there's the piece of longer, longer term for 15,000 per year. So that's, I think that's really the question that you guys need to decide what you want to do with that.
So pumping it out is $500 a shot?
Yeah.
Is that right? Okay. And, and you're doing that weekly?
Weekly, yeah.
So you, you cut back during the summer, right?
Yes, but I don't think it's so much so that it doesn't, like, from my understanding, it really does kind of average out to be like a weekly.
Regardless.
Yeah.
Okay. So year round.
Right, yeah. So it's, you know, it's that $2,000 a month, basically.
And is, it is a, a site, Jerry, we talked a little bit about this, that is a site for the town for emergency use.
Yeah.
That building.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, they're, yeah, they have.
And I think a concern is also the pumping every week is working. But at some point, what if that doesn't work? And then we're, you know, unexpectedly having to do something rather than planning it.
Technically up a creek without a paddle?
Yeah. By the creek, actually.
Locomotion. So so we're essentially paying 24,000 a year to pump it? Or we can pay 15,000 a year to replace, yeah, to replace it?
Right, right.
And again, the 15 is an estimate.
Right, yeah, right.
I think also the, the question is just like, I think that in our heads, it's always the question of what is the long term?
Long term.
Here, and so, you know, putting the money in is always.
But the best, I mean, best case scenario, if we get a site plan here, there's years before that's going to.
Yeah. Right, that's, that's accurate, yeah.
If there was a new building in a, in a long-term plan, if there was a new building for Lebanon in that general area, would the Leach field be usable potentially for that site? Or would it need a new, new Leach field?
I don't think you'd be adding on to LES.
Right.
I think if we're gonna add on, it would be Hanson.
And I think as we go along, we're gonna have more of these decisions. This was the Leach field, this is one of the two. There's, you know, they've checked out the other one that appears in, in tradition at this point. But is it next time a boiler? Is it next time, you know, what, where are we gonna go with this? So I think it's, you know, important to kind of figure out how we're gonna address these as they inevitably will come up.
And then we don't really know what's gonna happen if we do have a cold spell. If it will freeze. So do we need a motion for her to do that with the, with the bank?
I don't think you need a motion because it's, I'm not doing anything formal. But what I will do is I will go with it. I will confirm that we can start immediately and fund later. I will see, I will talk to the main bond bank about the specifics of what they need by when. And I will talk to the attorneys about the financing and how, and what we need to do next meeting in order to allow me to pursue that.
Prepayment on a bond, so if you pay, no?
Can't do it. Again, they let you do this over the useful life of the item. So that's one of the things I'm gonna confirm, that 10 years is the time, is what it is. Do you have interest in me seeing if we can do it over a shorter amount of time?
I was just thinking if we budgeted for the 500 per week.
We did, we didn't.
I don't think we did. Oh, we didn't? This all happened. Oh, it didn't happen that high, never mind, okay. Isn't, I think the useful life of a, a Leach field is 20 years.
I don't know if the, it depends, there's some legality about how many years you can go out.
Gotcha.
But I don't know if you have interest in me researching how to do it in five years or seven years? Or just if it, if they'll take 10, we'll do 10? Or?
I'd be interested in seeing, seeing the shorter numbers. Yeah, just what we're paying overall in interest and everything.
Gotcha.
And you went through bank to bank, there, there are no banks that will do this? Is it like all those things, like it's not, because I'm, I'm interested in paying off sooner than 10 years. I mean, that's, we don't know what the future of that building is, and we don't want to be tying ourselves in for 10, 15 years if in five years is a decision.
Right. So. What I'll say is the banks with the lease purchase vehicle, so that's like an IRS bank credit vehicle that they do. So nobody pretty much does them, and the main bond bank is for cities and towns and school districts, really the place people go.
We can't work, can school districts work with credit unions? I'm asking because I don't know.
I don't know. I guess I don't know.
Is that what, is that what's looking to?
We've worked with, but they, I don't know, I can ask. I'll ask the one we deal with and see what their response is.
Okay.
I can do that.
Thank you. Is the reason that, that like the typical banks don't do things like that because it's kind of something you can't really repossess?
Yeah.
Like people can't pick up, well, I mean, I think that's. I think that's kind of. Yeah. Yeah, that's why the main bond bank is. Yeah, yeah, I know, I know.
And the other thing about the bond bank is you really get the benefit of the group purchase because you have all kinds of cities, towns, and school districts applying at the same issue. So they take all of the money that needs to be borrowed and try to negotiate rates from that, so.
So it's generally a better rate too, right?
Yeah, this right here is somewhere in the 3.5% to 4% percentage, it seems. That's pretty good. I will also just want to throw it there, as long as we're discussing financing, we should have a decision soon as well about that extra money for Norton, the 356, 350. We, if you remember, it's, it is the amount over what the state will approve for our SRF project. It has to be funded by the district. And what we did when we signed the SRF documents, we put in a letter saying we had interest potentially in financing through the main bond bank, that 356,000. We are not tied into it yet, but I have trouble seeing our budget being able to absorb that kind of money. So again, I think it would be something where we would need to finance it through the bond bank and spread it over.
And we didn't budget that either.
10 years. Is that, yeah, because that, it's not payable yet.
Right, right.
That project just ballpark, high 30s, low 40s per year. I think I printed out the wrong document, but it's somewhere in that $40,000-ish range over 10 years. So we'll need to talk about that fairly soon. So if you need more information, let me know.
Bring chocolate.
Halloween's coming.
So do we want to do a straw poll or just tell her to go forward or?
We need to, we need to, we need to at least make a decision. We need to pursue that, I think, yeah.
Definitely.
It sounds like you're like to straw poll. It sounds like you're like to straw poll wise, right?
Yeah.
We're we're in favor of the project moving forward. We just haven't figured out exactly which
Okay, that's good.
Yeah. But we're but we're assuming that I'm gonna get information from the bond bank and if it's acceptable, we'll go forward in that way. Should I should I be prepared for that? Or am I just still data, you know?
If you're looking at the credit union thing too, I'm just curious.
And I will, I will ask.
Bring that stuff back. And then I think with all that information, I'd be ready to make a decision. I mean, I don't know what more I'd want you to do.
What I'll do is I'll ask about the credit union. I'll make sure about the timing of the project and the payments and the refunds or reimbursements. And I will um get a motion prepared in the event that you want to move ahead. That way it can be done at the next meeting. Kevin can give the go ahead to the company and we can move forward with our application.
Sounds great.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
So do we know about how long it would take?
We don't have that information.
I mean, I think it would be
Relatively quick and before winter.
Yeah.
Is that is the time.
So they're not gonna get paid. They they will do it.
So they're paid by us. We wait to get our reimbursement.
Yep.
And there's nobody that's gonna wait for that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right. We're just gonna do the technology lease review for the questions.
So last week, last meeting, we we approved the technology lease because it was timely. But there was a question, so we have Bridget here to answer the question.
Thank you for coming, Bridget.
That's great news. What questions do you have?
I I had a question, just maybe it was the way it was labeled and I didn't know what it was. It says student C B's and I was like, C B's. After I looked at it like a fourth, I was like, I wonder if they're Chromebooks. And I was like, then I felt like an idiot.
That's okay. That wasn't even the question. It was really a que- a question of the phones. And I couldn't answer it. Yeah, I couldn't answer that clearly, so.
We're getting two hundred and forty five phones? We talked to, like, are we currently voice over IP and changing or how's that? Where's that phone system currently?
We are voice over IP and um we have a few parts lines. They have it required in elevators and like dressing rooms and various places around the school. Um, we, we had a weird, uh, we had, we had like a mid model phone that we, well, no, kind of a lowish model of phone. Because, you know, we try to be frugal about that, that we purchased about three years ago, which was before my time and my network manager. So um and starting at the at the end of twenty twenty three, we started getting reports that um people would call in and have like a garbley. Um, it was, the audio was distorted on the recordings um coming in and out. And then that same phone um guidance wasn't able to call out, uh, can use the auto attendant. So they they weren't able to call emergency um services. So we had, we uh we worked with our vendor for six months trying um system wide fixes and phone swaps. Anyway, the only thing that worked was the phone swap. So um we we pushed our our phone replacement up two years, unfortunately upgraded our phones and are in a a better place now across the district for the next five years, which is our our anticipated life's life um lifespan of a phone.
Oh, I was hoping they had a longer lifespan than five years.
I know, I know.
How long do I use my phone?
So fast. And unfortunately, we probably will look again in five years because we'd like to move, I mean, every, everything is moving to a uh cloudless
Cloudless.
Cloud server um dashboard. And it really, you know, it's easier to manage for my team that way and um it's easier problem solve and troubleshoot. Um, I know you think it's just a phone. Why can't I get a phone upgrade? But uh half of our phones now are Wi-Fi phones, which um is great because the teachers can move them wherever in the room there's an outlet. So that makes them much more accessible and um really our phone concerns are security and communication based.
Hmm.
We don't care about how the newest and fanciest goes for our teachers.
Hmm, agreed.
It is a lot.
Yeah. And a question?
That's like half. We have like five hundred and sixty phones across the district.
Excuse me.
So I mean, in five years, we're gonna do the other half? Like, is that like?
We did half within the last um year. The part of it was F Y twenty three and then part of it was F Y twenty four as part of this lease.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, and I think that we can hold, you know, we will try to do that the same year after five or six years because they were purchased within six months to each other. Does that make sense?
Of course, same same age.
F Y twenty four, F Y twenty four.
For twenty five. Doesn't matter.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bridget.
All right, we'll be going to district goals.
All right. So last time, again, at our meeting, um, the beginning of September, we talked about our district goals. And as part of that discussion, we referred to our strategic plan. Uh, there were four parts to our strategic plan, which included community engagement, school safety, high quality resources and pathways to success. We talked about the fact that these goals, uh, these overarching pieces of our strategic plan were really developed over a long period of time with staff input, with community input, with board input. Um, and that's how we came up with those. So a lot of districts, again, use their strategic plan as their guiding principles and goals. Um, when we talked last time, we talked a little bit about having each section, like community engagement, and then having smart goals under that, school safety, smart goals under that, high quality resources, same thing, and pathways to success. So from that last meeting to this meeting, we looked at pathways to success, worked as an administrative team to refine some um goals for you to review. And these are set up as a smart goal. So a smart goal is achievable, relevant and time bound. So you can see at the top plan portion, and then the smart goals are underneath. Look at those. Then I'll talk about a little bit about how they are set up. There are copies on the back, in the back of the room, if anybody wanted to see one.
Thank you for providing these copies to people.
All right, so I'll just talk through some of these. So the first one, June twenty six, seventy five percent of third grade students who've been enrolled in the district since kindergarten will achieve a grade level proficiency on the benchmark assessment. So BAS is benchmark assist assessment. We will write that out. I realize that's an acronym, so we'll, an acronym, we will fix that. Um, what we're trying to do is look why we have three areas here is that we're really trying to capture our youngest learners. Uh, then the the bulk of them that take the um the N W E A through years assessment. And then really, it's about graduation. That's what it's about, right? And for our pathways, all of our pathways, like we started talking about, we could list out every single pathway and every single goal under that pathway, but really it is ultimately about our graduation. And our pathways are successful when you look at our graduation. That's, so that's how we work with that. Um, so we wanted to to look at, also, we were pretty pretty curious and we've done this a little bit on and off, but looking at students who've actually been in the district for a bulk of time to to really evaluate how our projects and everything is moving as far as that goes. We do have quite a few of trans transient students, move ins, move outs. Um, we certainly, you know, look at addressing all of their needs and through through the goals as well. But we do want to highlight, looking again at our programming for our students that have maintained above the the school district. So the middle bullet says, by June twenty twenty six, MSAD sixty will increase the percentage of students meeting or exceeding the state expectations on the main through year assessment assessment in math and literacy by ten percent. So um again, this is an assessment that we're doing, third grade and up to tenth grade, and then uh eleven and twelve don't take the assessment, which is why we added the um you know, the graduation one as well. So we're trying to capture all of our students through these areas.
What percentage of you have up the top ahead, are we now as far as graduation rates?
Currently, we're about ninety five percent this year.
But I mean, you want to go to what, twenty five percent in the state? Is that what?
Because it fluctuates every year, like the state will fluctuate every year. So yes, we want to be in the top twenty five of the state. Yes. We did talk about having a one year measure um for these and it just felt, um, because when you look at our strategic plan, we're going to twenty thirty. So having incremental parts. So the first one would be, you know, twenty five, twenty six, which would give us two administrations of um testing data and then the graduation rate, you know, every single year for that. So we figured that that was a a period of time, the twenty six, and then the next one.
Hmm.
Uh, a naive question. Uh, I know some students, some students with I E Ps will graduate on their 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 goals and their I E P. Aside from that population, is the criteria for everybody else exactly the same? They have to earn the same number of credits, the same credit, or do we have different diplomas for different outcomes?
Don't talk about it.
It's a good question. Um, so we have um the district graduating requirements. There is a current state of Maine statute that does allow students due to the pandemic to graduate with the state of Maine requirement, but they do not receive our local diploma. They receive a state of Maine diploma based on those required. Um, and we have had the last couple of years, a small number of students, ten to twelve, I would say, so four or five percent that have, um, and there are a lot of times students that may have moved family situations with it. It's a lot of like really extenuating circumstances that allows us to remember that. The absolute bulk of students, excuse me, are are local graduations.
And and we just have one diploma. Okay, could I just experience in other districts, there's like different diplomas and everybody calls it graduation. I'm like, uh.
Yeah, yeah.
The only the state of Maine diploma is a is a pathway, and that would be, for example, just for kind of whoever goes for that before the pandemic, that was like home schooled students. Um, the state of Maine has some virtual academies, things of that nature. That, and then, of course, the state mandates, you have to read, you know, so the state requires two years of science, two years of math, two years of history versus our four, three and three, you know, so there is a difference, but we have one.
Thank you.
So are we good with these?
Do we need to refine them anymore or what? People think they're good or?
Good, they're pretty straightforward.
Um, the research does not support using the BASS as the, an assessment anymore.
Well, that's as a single measure.
Uh, but that's what we're using proficiency on the BASS.
As one measure. You also see that we're using the N W E A.
No, no, on the
We're just talking specifically on this, on the third graders.
Districts in kindergarten will see grade level proficiency on the BASS. I don't think that's a good measure to, I mean, this is the goals, but unfortunately, we're also talking assessment. And the BASS and the Fontis-Pennell, both of those have been kind of outdated as of
I understand the research and I understand some of the um problems that school districts have faced with just one, using the benchmark assessment as one assessment. We're also using the N W E A in our lower grades as well, but we um are looking at the benchmark assessment at this, for this juncture.
I would like to think that maybe we could look at a different assessment that is a little bit more accurate, maybe before we put this goal in place. Maybe just do some, maybe, I don't know who in the district does that, but um
We have Dr. Swiger, who will come in and she can talk to that because
We do that. I mean, I just, I know the BASS is considered to be less, I mean, it, Fontis-Pennell was great when it came out. It was covered a very, it covered a a need. But it's no longer as applicable as it once was, based on the new evidence and the research.
I I think there's a lot of different research, but we can have Dr. Swiger come in and we can talk through that. She did speak to that a little bit last year as well. But we have multiple measures that we use. This is a measure that we put down because we've done a lot of training and we have a lot of um you know, work that we do with that and a lot of uh direct instruction because of um how we're how we're using it.
Well, I think that we need to look at various measurements because this one, you know, I just don't, in all of the years that I've it's not exactly the one I would be using if I was looking to see grade level growth.
Well, that's why we have multiple, we've listed other things and there are a lot of other ways.
Is this one goal that we've broken up into three different? I thought it was one goal and then
The overarching goal is pathways to success. And these are the three ways, smart goals that we have created to work through uh the pathways of to success.
Yes.
To um evaluate our pathways.
Okay, so I'm gonna say again, I don't think the BASS is appropriate for the K two, three. I certainly don't think the main through year assessment is appropriate for ten percent increase. I I just think we could see a lot more. I think we could raise our standards considerably and I really like to see a criterion referenced assessment, which is based on core level of objectives rather than what the other kids in the state are doing, because we already know the state's not doing well.
With the through year, there are, is some criterion reference.
I know, I know. But it's not as ac, it's not as really
So these are the, these are the assessments that we utilize currently, right? And so maybe there is a conversation about like
Yeah.
the ongoing piece of it, but utilizing the ones that we're actually using, uh, that our teachers are using right now, it makes sense, right?
I think that, you know, we, the goals are very, I mean, academic goals are very, very, very much what I interested in. And I really want to see our district achieving much higher.
Can we add one? Can we put, if we're doing the end of your ways, can you somehow just using both sets of information?
One we can, yes. So we can use the benchmark and the N W E A. Last year, when Dr. Swiger was in, she did a comparison about the scores with the benchmark assessment and the N W E A and how they they pretty much correlated quite well at the grade levels, but we can certainly add something about that in there if that broadens the scope. Yep.
Madam Chair. Um, I, I mean, we had this conversation, um, maybe about a year ago, I think. Um, and at that time, I was I was emphatic that we really need a criterion referenced assessment in order to if we're gonna say kids are on grade level, the only way to do that is a criterion reference assessment. Um, the N W A is normative, we know that. Um, the the BASS has other issues, but um we really, I would really love to see us move in the direction of criterion reference assessment. I know they say the through assessment is based on criteria. Yeah, okay, I I think it's, there's so many questions on it, but even then, the benchmark is they have to get half of the questions right. I teach high school. Students who get half the questions right on a test, fail. They're not on grade level. That's what the through year assessment says. Right? I don't think that that's an appropriate assessment for us to use. I think we really need to say let's find some criterion reference assessments, let's put them in place. Let's, let's shoot for a goal. I mean, we we talked about, um, when Dr. Swiger was here, you know, yeah, we want to shoot for eighty five. Okay, we'll shoot for eighty five. When? Um, when, right? I'm okay if it's like, okay, we're gonna get, try to get to here in one year and here in two years and here in three, but when, what year are we gonna say K eight? Our student, eighty five percent of our students are are reading and doing math on grade level, because honestly, if students are reading on grade level by the end of grade eight and they're doing math on grade level by the end of grade eight, I'm pretty confident that they're gonna be graduating and that they're gonna be successful in Pratt and Whitney and the the shipyard or heading off to college or whatever it is. Like, let's set a mark that defines us as a school district and says, you know what? Yeah, we got an audacious goal. And we're gonna work our rear ends off on it and we're gonna, you know, we're gonna figure out how to get that done. I would love us to see just not, not, not a little like, let's go for it. Let's, let's, let's take this chance as a board and really, really go for it. And I would encourage us to really think about that.
We do have the um, for us working, we do have an eighty five percent goal for proficiency in literacy and math.
What year?
These are the pieces to help us get there. These are the incremental pieces to help.
What year? What year are we gonna be at eighty five percent?
We're hoping by twenty thirty. That is, that is the goal. And that is why these are incremental pieces.
It has to be based on a criterion referenced assessment. That, I am adamant about that. Absolutely adamant.
So anyway, we don't need to make a motion on these. Just bringing, what I, what we're doing is every, every meeting will bring some of the other Some of the other sections till we get through all four, so we can talk through all those.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, and yes, duly noted the concerns in the questions. We do not have any new hires, retirements. See, I said that, I said that well, instead of.
Okay, superintendent's update.
So just a few things, the um, since our last meeting again, every school has had their open house. Open house was really well attended in all of the buildings. Uh, a big difference between this year and last year was last year was like a hundred twenty in some. Rooms when we were having open house, it was so hot, but um. Lebanon and Hussy were very hot. Um, it's, there was. Everything, so that was nice, but it was great to see that the turnout in all of the buildings. And um, let's see. We, Sue and I had a great meeting with the, the bus drivers last week and. I think it was last week, the beginning of last week or the week before, uh, just talking about because we have. We have four vacancies still, four um, positions. And we do have some absences, so we talked about that last time too, but we really worked with the um. With our transportation, our drivers to come in so that we could do some problem solving about if a run is, needs coverage. How can we kinda look at, look at who has availability on their bus and how they can pick some students up or how we can do a second run. Um, to kinda pick up those students that maybe didn't have um, the ability to get to school by parents. So since then, there's been, I think, four times that we've needed to make some adjustments. Some vacancies and uncoming runs. And um, we really appreciate our drivers because they've really stepped up. Cover, you know, certain sections, like if you look at it, it looks, it's pretty impressive, like, you know, Lebanon, these three roads, this driver does. This driver does full. So it's, it's been working out. The hard part is gonna be, um, those are all good because we've had notice, like for, if it's a doctor's appointment or something. But if, if there's a call out at four o'clock in the morning because of the illness or, those are gonna be harder to handle in the morning. Um, afternoon, we'll be able to have some time to, to work through that, but that's, that's really gonna be part of the struggle. Um, so that's that. I did have um, a question about some dates. So October, we need to have two expulsion hearings. Um, so we would like to propose October first. Due to timing of one of those needs to be done at that date or prior to. Um, and that is a Tuesday. And if, I just need to know if we can have a first.
It means we get to see you twice in a week.
Yeah.
What do you feel about that?
Like at six thirty, seven.
Yeah, the sooner, as soon as folks could be able to do it, I think we could do.
Is that the preferred?
Are you gonna have them back to back?
Yes, back to back.
Okay. October first is the preferred date, if, but if that doesn't work, we can, if we can't get a, a quorum, we'll have to talk.
I could be here by six thirty.
Me too. I can't be here before six thirty.
Six thirty though?
Thank you.
Okay. I can be here at six thirty.
Okay, two expulsion.
Yes.
Same night?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Coaching garb. Alright, that up.
So October first, six thirty starts.
I don't know what these are, I have no clue, but can we make sure we have a police presence if they're?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Yes. Does anybody have any other? Issues?
I'm sure. I, I have a question um, for Denise. Um, Denise, were you able, are you able to inform us what those numbers were? The one, the two, the nine in the um, when we approved the?
Yes, so.
Thank you.
Um, in the warrants, this goes back to the discussion we had about warrants and when you're signing these.
Yep.
And just some electronically. So generally, number ones are people's primary pay, so their salaries, their wages. Check number two is generally an additional something they're doing. If they're on a committee, if they are running. If they're a coach, if they're doing something else, they generally get a second check. Uh, because what the software does is if you combine them, it assumes you make that all year. And it bumps up how much it withholds in taxes. So doing a second check keeps it at a um, an additional level. And the nines, I believe, are also an additional payment and I believe they are grant related. And it's so that they can track, again, it's, those numbers are simply for my payroll staff.
Thank you for getting back to us.
Anybody else have another? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm uh, did we have any luck in finding out what those surveys were that were being done at the various schools?
So those were getting to know you surveys. And um, a majority of teachers, like at the high school, do those, have those surveys and it's on a Google survey. And what it is, is it asks anywhere from five or more questions, anywhere from, you know, what's your name? What are your hobbies? What's your learning style? Um, so those questions are optional. Um, if you however, um, the, the. The fallback on Google survey is that it goes to required. I think that was part of the question, like some of the questions seemed required. But the fallback to the default is required. So we've, we've asked, you know, staff to put that as an optional thing.
To be clear about that.
Yep, yep. And there is one question on there for some of the students or from some of the, the questionnaires about. Um, do you want she, her, him, he?
He's the one that was bothersome, was the one, do you want us to tell your parents you're changing your name?
We haven't seen that.
And that, and the, and the other thing was the young age at which they were giving the survey. I believe it was done at the fifth grade level.
Okay.
And I just, I, I just think we need to know exactly what we're sending out for. And where is it going other than in the? So Google survey is.
It goes to the teacher.
Just to the teachers.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other thing is my same old, same old, when are we gonna get the contracts?
So that, we can talk after, cause I just want more information about what you want for the, why, the purpose and what it is. Where our offices, business office is swamped, so.
Like, and, and like, are you talking about every single contract that we have? Because there are multiple contracts with individuals and are you looking at types? So like, would you let, so let's talk about that. Yeah, cause, yeah, we're not, yeah. Cause I think we tried to share like the general contracts, teacher contracts, that kinda thing, so um, but. Yeah.
Anybody else?
Um, yeah, I had one. Have you on this? Sorry. Um, and there was a, there was an issue raised by a parent on non-school materials that were in the middle school. That were not. Not school related.
Mm-hmm.
They were from a private company, private organization. That was.
So for those of you, um, there was an email to the Lebanon board members and then um. Throughout the process, um, and added, another board member was added to the, to the email strand. And apparently at open house, a parent had seen a flyer in a bathroom that was, had with concern about the flyer. And some of the concern about the flyer was that um, there was a specific thing on there that they took exception to. And felt that it was a private um, a private document. So when the parent asked questions about it, we um. Gave her the avenue to use um, challenging materials. You know, that, that policy that we have on challenging the materials to um. To bring it forward if there's a concern about that, that, given her that form several times. We have not heard that she's going to complete that form, but there is a mechanism for her to do so.
Okay, but according to policy, KHC. That would have had to have been approved.
If you, if you follow the, the chain and you're on the chain, if you follow the chain, we do, I do address that.
So. But KHC.
I address the policies, yes. So.
Okay, so one of the, one of our questions was whether it was approved.
She can go through the process. We've, we've had about. Numerous emails on this and because there is a lingering concern for this community member. The best route to go would be to challenge that material so that we can have a committee come forward. And go through all of the questions and concerns that they have. That is, that has been. How we've recommended that, yes.
Just on that note, um, I think the policy for um, the challenging materials is instructional materials. So over the last, I mean, I don't know how many years people have been here, but how? What, what other instructional materials have we posted on the backside of stalls in the middle school bathrooms?
I would have to pull, pull all schools.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I mean, it just seems weird like, man, again, math teacher, I would, I wouldn't post my instructional material in the backside of a stall. I'm just surprised that that's, that's the avenue we're taking when. The instructional materials on the backside of a bathroom, on the back of a door of a bathroom stall. Um, it just seems, that's not instructional materials, just based on location. So there's just, there's just questions, it just seems. You know, that just seems, that just doesn't seem to match instructional material. So I get why the, the community members like, wait, what are you talking about? Instructional materials on the backside of a bathroom stall door.
Do we know where that came?
Again, if the parent wants to make a complaint, challenge the material, they can do so.
Okay, I just, I just, I mean, I actually think that some of the stuff on the flyer was. Good information and putting it on the back of the bathroom stall, get it read. Sorry, but it was only one. Yeah, I mean, it was ninety percent really good information, in my opinion.
Yeah. Anybody else? Do we have any additional public input tonight?
There we go. Thing Joyce Tabor from. It was mentioned that our taxes went up. Yeah, I was too, and especially for the school budget. I'd like to believe that past and recent increases were necessary. For improved learning strategies, math, science, history, spelling and writing. That would raise the standards of learning here in SAT sixty, but it is not. Maine is still dead last in the nation. What caused this decline? From the few papers I have read, common core was not beneficial to our students becoming the best they could be. Instead, it brought down the standards along with no child left behind. The state and the educational system has done an excellent job of dumbing down our students. And removing competition in education. It appears to me that the emotional, social aspects of learning have become the priorities instead of the academics. More time is required of teachers to include counseling or social work, which they were never trained to do. Pronouns are important, more important than implementing strategies to educate students. To be contributing members of our society. Students have left out of schools in protests and staff supported this. Instead of using that particular issue as a teaching moment. The kids were in charge, not the staff. The school board was voted in by the people to follow procedural rules and guidelines. If they don't, how can we expect the teachers or the students to follow the rules? From where I stand, it's clear that changes need to be made. Rules need to be followed and higher standards and goals need to be implemented rather than the status quo. We need to be brave, strong and decisive moving forward. Or we will forever remain last in the nation. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that. I've heard a lot of negativity tonight and I have a tremendous amount of pride in our district. I love our district. I've heard multiple times that we're last in the nation, which you may have found from one source. But I slipped on my phone and I saw three other sources and we are not last in the nation on those. And so I'd like us to at least admit the fact that we're quoting one source over and over again. And trying to, well, destroy our district, say our district is awful, that we stink. Like, we're producing an excellent education here at Normal High School and the middle school at all of the elementary schools. And that needs to be celebrated and our communities need to start celebrating that, the teachers and the young people that live here.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then, number twelve.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion. All those in favor? You get on the first.
On the first at six thirty in the um, conference room.
Right.
Thank you, Bridget.